Hey, good evening and welcome. This is the January sixth, twenty twenty five. Meeting of the school committee. Happy New Year, everyone. Call the meeting to order five oh two. This meeting is being both audio and video recorded. Would like to ask that everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Start with a roll call Samantha, please.
Samantha Blasquez, secretary.
Sarah Trulio.
Lauren Smith, superintendent of schools.
Gregory Thompson.
Anthony Nella Richillo.
William Sprother.
Peter London.
Daniel Garcia, school superintendent.
Okay, thank you all. We have minutes for approval. I would take a motion, please.
To approve the December seventeenth, twenty twenty four regular session meeting minutes.
Made by Anthony Nella, second by William. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay.
And all states that was.
One extension, so four zero one. Thank you Samantha for those. Uh, committee and subcommittee communications, actually, uh, just before we move any further, uh, we'll do that after. Committee and subcommittee communications. Manuel, you want to start us, please?
Uh, two weeks ago, we had the high school concert with orchestra, chorus and band. Uh, it was a really nice concert, really nice turnout. And then that same week, the day before break, ju- the jazz band, part of orchestra and the chorus went to the senior home and virtual party to go play some holiday music for them.
Oh, great. Very cool. Thank you, Emmanuel. Amy.
I have an e-leaf meeting coming up, um, this week or next week, I'm not sure. And hopefully at our next meeting, I'll have any last minute information to report about the gala.
Do you have any first minute information about it?
Um, other than the tickets are on sale, you can purchase them online and the gala is February eighth. If there's any further information.
Race.
On that's forthcoming, I'll bring that back. But other than that, those are the basics.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Williams, nothing to report. Anthony Nella.
I don't have anything.
Thanks, Sarah.
No, we have a couple of meetings on the horizon, but nothing.
Oh, we do. That's, that's a good point. Um. Next Tuesday is our joint meeting with the town council for, uh, the budget discussion. Everyone wants to put that in their calendar, six o'clock Tuesday at the council on aging, yep. That's six. Um, and also, if everyone noticed, there's steel out in the back of the school. It's going up, starting the erect the school. So we're starting to see things going up. Uh, very exciting. So check it out on your way out. Okay, with that, um, opportunity for visitors to address committees, seeing none tonight. Then I would ask for a amendment to the agenda to bring seven point one to our next, uh, item of business.
Promote.
Made by Sarah, second by William. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That more carries five to zero. Discussion on preschool sections.
Yeah, Miss Lodi and Miss Lyden here. And in your package, you have, uh, pretty substantial charts. Let me look at, uh, the family years in terms of how we have divided up preschool sections, whether they do half day sections or full day sections and how many slots for IEP students we've, um, been able to create depending on the, uh, model we're following and how many, um, potential peer role models we have. With that, Miss Lodi and Miss Lyden, I want to present the possibility for some change for next year.
Slight change, slight tweak. Um, we had come to you guys at the end of the twenty one, twenty two school year with a proposal to restructure our preschool because for a number of years, which you can see by the data back of the informational sheet. We were over enrolled, um, with our students on IEPs. Um, we were consistently exceeding the IEP to peer ratios in all of our classrooms, not providing sufficient peer role models for our students. So we did that restructuring in the twenty twenty two, twenty three school year. Started off with three full day classrooms and one day half class, one half day classroom. However, that year we were again over enrolled. So we proposed a slight shift in that model to flip from three full days and one half day to reverse that model and do one half day and three, sorry, one full day and three half days. Since that time, what we have noticed as our peer enrollment has dropped significantly, we've lost more than half of our peers. Um, we've gone from the past year thirty one students to fifteen peers. Of those fifteen peers, eight of them are in our full day, our single full day classroom that we have. The remaining seven are spread out across the half day classrooms, which does not lead to a very good peer to IEP ratio again. Um, but in a very different way than we were experiencing before. Of particular note, um, I take lots of notes every year on our programming. Um, the numbers that I provided you are based on my notes of preschool, not of information directly from the computer because we made the switch from Reddiger to Power School and digging that data up was very difficult. Um. Some of the things that I make note of are not only the number of peers and students on IEPs, but of anybody that has declined or withdrawn from the program. And I try to make note when possible of the reasons why. Actually, fifteen of the families that declined spots in the program, eleven were four year olds and most of them cited looking for a full day program for their children, which I understand. Um, so what we'd like to propose for the coming school years to strike a better balance, instead of having three in one, we'd love to go two and two. We love to offer two full day classrooms and two half day classrooms. Um, I counted up over the years, again, based on my notes, um, the number of students on IEPs we've had every year. And the highest number that I came up with was forty five. By moving to a model of two and two, we are able to accommodate fifty one students on IEPs, which would give us a bit of a cushion above and beyond our highest IEP enrollment. Currently at thirty one students on IEPs enrolled in our program with fourteen referrals pending. There's more than fourteen referrals pending, but there are fourteen that have, um, cognitive or developmental testing and they're not just like related service only referrals. Um, so we'd be looking currently if all of those students qualify at about that same number, forty five, give or take, because we don't know if they've qualified yet. Um, by doing this, we feel we can better meet the needs of families, um, because a lot of them are looking for full day options. We can enhance kindergarten readiness by providing more rest book program for more students as they enter kindergarten, increase, uh, pure enrollment, which will in turn increase our revenue, um, because we do depend on some of that revenue. Not only would it increase our enrollment, but it would increase the number of peer spots in the full day program, which is at a higher tuition rate. And then it would also help us to better balance the peer to IEP ratios and also allow for more balanced classrooms because currently with that one full day, the full, full day students who have significant challenge end up in the same room, which can make for a very challenging, uh, school year. So it would allow us to create opportunities to better separate students that may have need for separation. Um, and we believe we can do all of that while still maintaining enough spots for students on IEPs.
Of the thirty one students this current year, are all of those students staying in the pre-K program next year or any of them exiting and going to kindergarten?
Thirty one students on IEPs?
Yes, sorry.
One, two, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Are going to K?
Are going to kindergarten.
So then that would also give you like more room. Um, if those fourteen exit, that leaves you sixteen, no, seventeen spots that could go to.
Yep, we'd be moving forward, one, two, three, four, five, and ten three year olds that are currently in the program on IEPs. And then we have the fourteen referrals.
Okay, alright.
So we're advancing those students.
Okay.
Ahead.
Fourteen, however, wouldn't necessarily be. Fourteen's not a definite number.
Not a definite.
Other referrals.
Ending referrals right now.
And then how about space? I mean, I know that's always been.
Always a concern at our building. Um. Currently, what I, I have a plan and when we brought the ETL into the mix this year for our building, I did this very mindfully where I put people thinking that if I were able to move to this model, I now have a new space to shift them to. So the space, when we moved our, um, two counselors out of their room.
Okay.
Into the main hallway area, I closed down an AV closet and gutted the room and got a lot of old AV equipment out there and turned that into a counseling office. Um, I left that space open as a spot for River Valley Counseling on half of the room and a conference room on the other half of the room where we hold our ACT meetings. Hoping that if this comes to fruition, I can take the ETL and school psych and move them into that space, move River Valley into the space at the back of the library and then move our preschool program coordinator back across the hall into the speech room where she was before, which would allow me the space to make this happen without disrupting a whole lot of people.
So now there's, excuse me, seven sections, right, with the three.
We currently have two half day classrooms, one full day classroom. The full day classroom has two teachers in it. They're co-teaching. I worked with, um, Michael Freda on that last year and that is partly why we are continuing to enroll students into that classroom. As you can see on the notes, we're over enrolled. Uh, we're over enrolled, but we do have two teachers in that room.
In the full day. Oh, how many preschool teachers are there then?
There are four. Not need to hire anybody else, just simply break that co-teach model apart.
So.
One in each room.
Re- make it clear again, how many sections currently exist?
We currently have two half day classrooms.
So four.
Four.
Half day sections.
And one full day.
So five sections right now.
This would allow us to go back to six sections.
Two full.
Two.
Two halves, two double.
Yep.
Oh, then you will need another classroom.
Which is your point.
Exactly.
Room.
I planned ahead for.
But not.
Advantage.
Okay. I see. But what about the one teacher in the full day versus the two?
It would allow us to have, so part of the reason we had done that was because that classroom the year before was incredibly challenging. It's all the students with the most significant needs in the same room. Um, so supporting that with two teachers in that room allowed us to better meet the students' needs. Splitting that into two will allow us to split the more challenging kids into two classrooms in order to make that a little bit more manageable for the teachers. Gives us options.
And the paraprofessionals are funded partially through tuition in preschool? Is that correct?
We have, um, I think part of one teacher and.
A couple.
One paraprofessional, correct.
Do you foresee the, uh, need for any more staff with this change, including paraprofessionals?
I don't believe so. I think we can make it work with the staff that we currently have. Um, we're going to need to get creative and think a little bit differently because it will be taking the paraprofessionals that are spread over three rooms right now and spreading them over four.
Right.
Um, and that could look a couple of different ways. It could be two paras in each of the full day programs and one in the half days. Or it could be one for each room of the four rooms and then the other two could be split part time between the four rooms um, on kind of a rotating basis, depending on the times of day. Half day needs people at different times than the full day does with arrival dismissal and then full day needs them in the middle for rest and, uh, lunchtime because we do have to feed them when we keep them full day.
Just to give you a more specific answer, you have, um, on the tuition account, you have a preschool teacher, one preschool teacher, point seven of the preschool program coordinator and two paraprofessionals. So this would solidify that account more so than it is right now.
And I do believe we could fill those full day spots because we currently have a waiting list for full day spots. And you look at the private preschools in the area, they're hiring teachers and opening classrooms.
Right. No additional impact on specials or?
Um, it would mean that we would have to add, so for our full day, we offer two specials. Um, we have Rusty come in for music and then we have APE with Mackenzie. Mackenzie's a district employee, so it would just be adding one slot to each of them.
And in a full day class, how many kids are typically enrolled?
Seven students on IEPs with eight peers. That's the maximum we're supposed to have.
I was just thinking like even if there was, if we couldn't get an extra section open for specials, there could be the possibility to sometimes collapse those with proper paras going into software.
Yeah.
I could bring twenty four and twenty four together.
Right. Bring in more kids. Let's do it. Any other questions? Okay, uh, take a motion to approve plan for the preschool for the next.
Sorry, do we keep the same or do we get tuition or is that?
Uh, that'll be a separate discussion, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you could keep it the same. It's projected with using it the same.
Okay.
It's just that we'd have.
Look at it.
We'd have more full day tuition coming.
Coming in, okay. Alright.
And you're not recommending that right now in terms of your level? No. Yep, yep. Which I mean, yeah. Okay, anything else? If not, I would take a motion to approve and discuss, please.
Make a motion to approve modification of the current preschool, um, structure to from, sorry, help me out. I don't know how you want me to word it.
Two half day and one full day.
Two half day, one full day.
Two full day and two half day.
Two full day and one half day.
For our next count, next school year.
For next.
Two half day.
Yeah, two and two, two and two. Next academic year.
Second. Uh, motion made by Amy, second by William. Samantha, yeah, two and two on that last part.
Yep.
Cool. Um, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That carries five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, when do we get to see the preschool, the, uh?
I was there on Tuesday, New Year's Eve, and it wasn't done yet. And then I came in on Thursday and one of the teachers said, the fence is up.
Oh, it is?
Um, yep, I've got to go out there and just check and make sure swings have been attached and all the little, there was little bits and pieces. Um, unfortunately though, now that it's winter and the snow is coming, cloud, the playgrounds and the slides and everything get really icy. So we may be looking at like an early spring ceremony.
Okay.
Um, to get everybody out there and use the playground. Awesome. It looks great.
Great, good stuff. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Okay. Let's go back into order of our budget. Excuse me, we have a discussion of the FY twenty six budget development. Yes. You want to touch on this, Corey?
Yes, please.
Uh, so in your packets, uh, Mrs. Blair put together a very comprehensive overview of where we currently are with some look at, um, in terms of salary scales, where we're going. Um, and so certainly I can't do the same justice that, uh, Mrs. Blair, who unfortunately couldn't be on this tonight, um, can do. I will walk you through it quickly. And, um, certainly if you have questions that I can answer, I'll answer those and any that we can't, we can bring back to future, uh, budget discussions. So just to give you an idea, the top part of the document that she put together gives you an idea of our chapter seventy over the years. And, um, this fiscal year, we have from chapter seventy, which is the funding that comes from the state, we have fifteen million, two hundred and ninety nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty six dollars coming from the state, flowing through the town, um, to create our operational budget. The rest is provided, uh, by the town of East Long Meadow. Gives you an idea of historically where we've been over the last, um, few fiscal years. Interestingly enough, um, when the Student Opportunity Act came into being, um, a minimum was set regarding what chapter seventy would at least have to go up to each year for a municipality and it started at thirty dollars, excuse me, thirty dollars per pupil and ultimately was moved up to sixty dollars per pupil. Last year, that's actually what we received was the sixty dollars per pupil minimum in terms of our increase. Um, if you look going down, look at the chart, it breaks out our budget from FY sixteen to FY twenty five, um, between chapter seventy, local contribution and overall percentage increases in both situations. Slow me down if, um.
Okay.
Uh, as you go to the second page, it gives you a list of our entitlement grants and, um, how currently we're using them, things like title one, title two A, title four. Um, the big one, obviously, special education IDEA grant and then, um, a smaller one, early childhood grant and used both, um, in special education programming. S R three, uh, which initially ended on September thirtieth of twenty twenty four, um, has not only over the past year plus funded a number of things, it also funded some things that, um, we have to think about in terms of summer academy programs, uh, ongoing professional development. It funded curriculum materials over the last few years and software licenses. Then at the bottom of page two, you have an idea of our revolving accounts. These are accounts, obviously, um, hence the name that, um, can remain, um, and turn over a year each year. Uh, it's not money that you're returning back at the end of the, uh, fiscal year. Uh, one of those accounts is broken out, um, more specifically, and actually we were just talking about this in terms of, um, the tuition revolving account because the one area where you do take in tuition is our preschool. And, um, tuition that is taken in then is used to go back to supporting the preschool in providing, um, support towards the preschool teacher salary, preschool coordinator salary and two paraprofessionals. And then it gives you an idea of projected, uh, rollover at the end of the year and, um, how we would look to utilize that, those funds next year.
We're rolling over substantially less than last year.
Correct, yeah. I think that's part of the reason why, um, certainly it's, it's good to add another section of full day. But the fact that we're down with your role models, which then puts us into a poor balance between IEP students and, um, non-IEP students, it also, um, affects the.
Only account. Makes sense.
Um, then continuing down that page, another, uh, account is the circuit breaker account. And this is the, the money that, uh, is reimbursed back to, um, school districts when they, um, at the, um, late spring generally is when you're doing it, you're putting in for, um, and requesting reimbursement up to seventy five percent of money that you have spent in support of a child on an IEP above in this year's threshold is, uh, fifty two thousand dollars and change. Excuse me. The only money that, uh, Desi reimburses on is that money that is spent above that fifty two thousand. And of that money, once you've gone through the formula and shown how you've expended these funds, um, you're going to be reimbursed seventy five percent of that money. And if people remember back to, um, a previous meeting earlier in the fall, uh, we actually with transportation, which just recently was added over the last two years to circuit breaker, there was such a demand for both transportation and tuition and academic support that the law actually reimburses, forces Desi to reimburse tuition and academic support first. That was all reimbursed at seventy five percent. And then whatever is left over for the, from the, um, funding that's been appropriated in that given year was basically reimbursed for transportation. That ended up being around forty to forty four percent, which was far different than, um, school districts were expecting. People? Yep, okay. Uh, the next chart, excuse me, and page provides you a look at, uh, school choice over the years. You can see when we began to participate, um, back in fiscal year twenty one, um, gradually we have almost balanced it out where we were, if you look at the chart back in twenty fifteen, we were sending students out, um, and there was no, there were no choice students coming in. Uh, and over the last few years, we've gradually, uh, balanced that out so that, uh, it's about equal. I think, uh, last meeting, but if not, uh, done here, um, the rollover is actually a little bit healthier than uh, we originally thought earlier in the fall as we were looking at, um, how special education costs, specifically some of our at district tuition costs have, um, increased. We were worried as we're transferring money ultimately, um, although, although it's going through different accounts first, um, we're using school choice to help offset those rising costs. Thinking we were going to be lower, closer to three hundred thousand in terms of our rollover, we think we'll be, um, somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and fifty thousand, which is a good thing. We always, uh, as a district, look at school choice and our participation in school choice in March, one of the March meetings. So that was something that obviously we'll discuss and, uh, will be timely. Moving on to, um, page five. Uh, one thing I, uh, no, it's, it's in there in bold, so I didn't neglect, had to say it. Um, eighty three percent of the school department's budget is, um, encompassed in salary. And then, uh, that leaves about seventeen percent for everything else that we spend money on. And, um, just to give you an idea of, um, some of the things we're looking at as we look at what does level services mean? Because that's always a number that's really important, especially as we prepare to speak with the town. Um, you have an idea of the projected, um, salary scale for teachers, uh, in the middle of page five. And then, um, where we've gone with our paraprofessionals, uh, in both cases, those were really successful in, in my opinion, negotiations and, um, I think we are where we should be. Um, and certainly with the paraprofessionals over three years, because we knew that it was going to take three years for that contract to really get to the level of, um, more of a living wage, if you will. And I think we're, we've achieved that as we move into and look at next year and, um, that's some of the feedback we're also getting from our union officers, whether it be unit A or unity. Uh, so that's nice to hear. That wasn't the case if we went back three years. However, it does make, uh, the, uh, level services number a little bit more interesting as we calculate that percentage. Uh, two associations with whom we will be negotiating this year will be our secretaries association and our custodians association. They're smaller, um, units nineteen and eighteen respectively. Um, and so those negotiations, probably the next, um, school committee meeting, I'll ask for, uh, representatives to be part of those negotiations, one for each. That gives you a look at the, uh, the current hourly wage structure in, in both contracts. We also have, excuse me, apologize. Uh, we have fifteen administrators, uh, and four central office clerical staff. Um, seven of these contracts are going to be negotiated. Uh, we'll bring those as we start that negotiation process. As we've done in the past, we'll bring you, uh, a spreadsheet so we can discuss that and get parameters for all of those and, um, make sure that we are able to negotiate fairly those contracts as well. And, um, depending on the changing needs, uh, we do right now have fifteen employee at will contracts. Um, actually, I think one of those contracts may go out of existence this week. And so hence the, um, the need for something like this as, um, needs arise, but you're not sure if they're going to be permanent, you may contract, um, with someone who can provide those services, mostly, uh, IEP services, um, during a certain period of time. And then ultimately, the hope is skills are gained and you can move forward and start to reduce some of the employees at will, uh, contracted needs. In essence, it becomes like a contracted service. Page seven, um, we're starting to look at, um, the biggest, um, operational expense in terms of special education and how much money, um, goes into tuitions and whether they be day tuitions or, um, resident. and how much money goes into tuitions and whether they be day tuitions or residential tuitions. It's a significant amount of money that is involved upwards of four million. And that's something that last time we were talking about just the fiscal update. We provided a couple of articles just that looked at the costs across the Commonwealth that districts are facing with special education. Because costs are continuing to go up. We were worried two years ago at this time about the fourteen percent increase that Desi was allowing. And thankfully, and it could be the fact that we had Esser sort of buoying, if you will, other areas of the operational budget. So we didn't feel that fourteen percent increase as much. And we're really starting, as well as other districts, are starting to feel it now. And then you have a breakdown of some of the software licensure that we currently have. And this is something that we review every year. And so there are items on or that were on this list two years ago that no longer on this list. If folks are not utilizing it, then we remove it. The challenge is that, just as you go down student instructional software, things like Adios, things like illustrious math or I am licensing, I am licensing K five and six eight, McGraw Hill reveal, Wilson Language Foundations. Those costs are associated with the curricular materials. And we're in this age where we're no longer utilizing textbooks. So you don't purchase a textbook and say, okay, we should be good in that subject area for the next eight to twelve years. Probably not twelve, but sometimes that happened. You're paying, and I have to give the, I guess, the company's credit here because they found a way. Because for a while, it was the wild, wild west, so to speak, where you weren't really paying for the resources and you were getting a lot of them for free, you paid an initial fee. But now they found a way to make it so that it's an annual fee. So if if we continue to utilize these resources, which gives us license to print and use the materials as well as use slides that are from the manufacturer for, say, lesson planning and certain things that you used to find maybe in a teacher's resource book. And I know I'm dating myself and you would pull out that that overhead. And you put that on there and you use that and you, you know, that might generate other things in your lesson plan. Now all of that's online, all of it's digital. So I'm sure that at some point, there will be a market adjustment because districts are going to figure out, okay, how do we live effectively in this new world and keep budgets under control? But right now, it's it's challenging. Those are, those are bigger numbers. And we had the benefit of Esser to initially get involved, but now we're moving it over to operational budget.
Is that something that we could still look at usage for? Because there are a few, one, two, three, four, five, six, just by my like rough estimation, that provides similar services that are not tied
Absolutely.
to a curricular resource.
No, I think we can, we should look at usage on all of it.
Okay.
What we were talking about as we were getting ready for this meeting is we definitely want to do that, but we don't want to pull things away that are supporting people as they continue to get into the curriculum and seem to be
Yep.
knock on wood, hitting a stride with it, which we're excited about. And so tough part, to I think your point is we're looking at, okay, what are some of these others that we can knock out? The unfortunate thing is they don't have the the same cost. It would be nice if they were equal cost.
True, they might balance out.
Might balance out some of it.
And it might give us the ability to support Ms. Brown as she's continuing to push for the curriculum implementation of
Correct.
the core high quality instruction materials.
Right, yeah.
How can we identify within those?
Further into the resources that you have, that's a great point.
Rather than spreading out, leaving too much choice. Might be time to kind of look at that, pull back in and then explore what we actually do need as opposed to caring. Because like I said, I think there's one, two, three, four, five, six roughly.
That have similar.
Similar.
And and the nice thing is we're starting to see that in some of the common planning time.
That helps.
In terms of as agendas are set, they're asking, how is this resource working for you? Which is great, because you're getting direct feedback during the common planning time meetings. So the last part gives you a look at the collaborative costs and the different programs that are coming through the LPBC, Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. I know that was very quick and not as in-depth as Claire might have done. But if you you do have questions that I might be able to answer now, or I can.
Thanks, Gordon.
Sure. Yeah, let's bring it back again with Pam's with us again.
Yeah.
And let's go through it. Thank you, that was good.
Terms of budget development, we're meeting with each of the building principals or probably their full team if they have an assistant principal, as well as with Jenny and Dr. Sullivan and Student Support Services, just to get an idea. But we also know that a lot of what's driving the increase is, you know, just getting the level services. So we're very aware of that. But we do want to make sure that we're discussing one of the, you know, we know, okay, if there's another way to get at it, we'll try to do that without necessarily going to the town for exorbitant percentage. Initial discussions, as you know, very informal, have been going well. And we have some formal discussions coming up with town council. And, you know, I think right now discussion has been around level services with expenses being eyed for level funded, possible level funding. I'm going to underline right now, possible. Still room to talk.
Always room to talk. Any other questions on the budget process so far? So please mark in your calendar if you're available for Tuesday at six P M. Okay. All right, thank you, Gordon, for that.
You're welcome.
We have another check from Gritten Barrett for, which school is this?
This is for Maple Shade.
Maple Shade, so I'd take a motion to accept. Check these.
Take a motion to accept. Call twenty twenty four commission check from Gritten Bear Enterprises, a count of one thousand two hundred and six dollars and sixty four cents to Maple Shade's school gift account.
Motion made by Anthony. Second, second by William, discussions. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, don't oppose nay, that carries five. Great, thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to old business, naming the new nadatorium. As we began our conversation last meeting, it is the job of this committee to come up with a name for our new pool facility. And so we discussed it briefly last week and our last meeting, we thought we'd bring it back. And Sarah, you weren't here, perhaps could offer a voice of reason. So with that, I would open up to discussion. Anybody, anyone but Amy want to say anything right now?
Nothing, no, no, I have nothing.
How about, this is my new thought then, was Redstone Quarry Nadatorium. It has a historical reference to the town. The building, when the architects were designing it, took from the art, from the quarries, the rigid jizz and such in terms of the facade of the building. Redstone is the right color and a quarry is a big hole in the ground full of water. How could it be any better than that? Discussion.
Sure.
The best thing. I don't know, that was my thought, I think.
Have to say quarry, let's just be red.
Well, but that makes it historical, that's the historical part of it.
A mouthful.
It is a mouthful, but we could short, we could shorten it to the quarry. I thought we could put on the wall on the inside, welcome to the quarry or something like that. Yes, Gordon.
I just wanted to, I think names that were thrown out in the last discussion and certainly have been thrown out in discussion with the school building committee. Spartan Nadatorium, Spartan Community Nadatorium, East Long Meadow Community Nadatorium, and then E L Community Nadatorium, and there may be one more. Think those were the ones that were.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was one that was a big push for the community in the name because we wanted to focus on the community, that's what we told the community when we asked them to vote for it. However, I believe that we now can make it a community pool by scheduling events that, you know, having the rec involved, having the town side involved, open hours for the public and start that now to to make it a community pool. And then maybe we don't need to put in the name.
I think Redstone Quarry, though, has a sense of community in that name. The history of our town.
Yeah. We could even put, you know, some historical pictures on the outside or something. Oh, there is an actual Redstone Quarry. It's the one behind Graziano's, right?
Is that one?
No, I think that's Redstone.
The one, I don't know where it is, but. Cross eighty three.
Where the, that's Brownstone Gardens, where Brownstone Gardens is.
No, the other way, by like
The other.
countryside, like you go across, there's a quarry behind there too.
Yeah.
There's one over there.
I think Redstone is the one over off of Elm Street.
Okay. I trust you more than I trust me on that, on that.
It used to be a swimming hole, there's pictures of people swimming and they had signs up and lifeguards and all that. It was a real thing. Not that we'd ever let our kids swim in a quarry anymore.
Why not?
You may have to get a pool named a quarry, let them swim there, yeah.
That's like the new version, it's a new version.
Are those photos we can actually get access to?
Yeah. Go to Redstone Quarry, East Long Meadow on Facebook, there's a group.
And I'm going to print them some more, I mean, like high quality photos.
I'm sure the originals are in the historic building.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that sounds cool to me if we can actually like. I.
What do you think, Emmanuel?
I like it.
You like it? Cool.
Great, I like the idea of the quarry, because that's a long. Redstone Quarry.
You can't just call it the quarry.
Quarry Nadatorium.
That's just doesn't do it.
How about the Redstone Community? Nadatorium.
Well, I think the quarry is important, though, that's historic.
Community's longer than this.
So we basically, it would say Redstone Quarry Nada Torm, I mean, obviously. But I don't know, it's a thought.
I like it.
I, I like it, I will, I will personally say I would have liked, I would have also liked the Gordon Smith Nada Torm as well. So just so we're clear.
I feel supported and seen now.
I, I do think, you know, on the record, I think for somebody that has been here to put this thing together for the last ten years, there definitely is honor in in that as well, even if it's, you know, fifty years and Gordon's going to be around for another fifty, so we're, we're good. I would make a motion that we, we name the, you name it the Redstone Quarry Nada Torm.
Motion made by William.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any other discussion?
No.
All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, don't oppose nay. Here's five to zero. Great, thank you.
Could do a street for you.
Easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's. Gordon Smith Way.
I appreciate, I appreciate.
Scraps.
Your driveway.
The sidewalk.
There you go.
Direct the statue.
There we go. No statues needed.
Okay.
With a Spartan helmet on you. We got this, this is all coming together nicely.
On his horse.
Maybe I can be similar to that, isn't there a quarry man statue?
There is a quarry man.
I can pose for that.
As long as you're on a swimming horse.
Seahorse, there you go.
In a quarry.
Water, seahorse.
Freshwater. Okay, that was great, thank you all.
Let's see, we have the approval of a third grade field trip to the Connecticut Science Museum in Hartford. And there was a mistake, it's actually Mountain View. And you said Maple Shade, but it's Mountain View, third grade.
Mountain View, third grade.
So as you can see, this is the third grade team and they have the support of Mrs. Santinello. And they are looking to go in May. Obviously, it's across state lines because the Connecticut Science Museum in Hartford, roughly ninety three students and possibly forty adults, so.
Where are they going, forty adults, it's a few times.
I think parents, each room would probably have at least one parent volunteer.
Great. Any questions? If not, I would take a motion to approve the field trip for Mountain View.
I'm sorry, I do have a question. We don't have the May date, so I'm assuming because science and math MCAS are in grade three in May, that this is going to be built.
This will be around that, yeah.
Around their schedule, okay, because there's no date on this.
Schedule for MCAS and then they would have to avoid that.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Take a motion.
I move to approve the Mountain View third grade field trips to Connecticut Science Museum in Hartford, Connecticut in May of two thousand and twenty five as presented.
Sarah, taking my, no more discussion, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And finally, the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six, wow, I said it, calendar, school year calendar.
This year's.
Or discussion.
Sure.
If you're following along, if you're. I apologize, I didn't provide this year's, just so you had a look at. We haven't changed as we went into drafting mode, we didn't change much. And next year is very similar in terms of how the calendar breaks out to this year. Such as if you look at August, I thought that this year we had dipped into August as far as we were going to dip before the calendar changed again, but nope. Next year, the twenty fifth will be our first day back with staff of August, at least in the draft version. And basically, we have just moved the same date forward into the twenty five, twenty six school year. One area to look at would be the holiday break this year. We knew that we had extended it a little bit and didn't bring everybody back on that Monday, the twenty third. Next year, that type of situation happens on the back end where we will be coming to school the twenty second and the twenty third, but would recommend that not bring everybody back for Friday, the second, but rather come back from the break on January, Monday, the fifth. Other than that, there's, there was only one item that was discussed briefly at the collaborative meeting. And it was just looking at the, the January professional development day is right where it is this year. This year it falls on the twenty ninth, next year it would fall on the twenty eighth. There was some discussion given to possibly putting it on March fourth, which still gives you another three and, three and change in terms of weeks in March and as well as April and May and a little bit of June. In terms of last year, the discussion centered on, you know, if you have your professional development day in March, are you able to utilize some of the, the information that you're being provided on that day? And so at least the discussion was that there would be time to do that.
I'd like to brainstorm some ideas about the holiday break.
Sure.
Either thinking about ways that we can capitalize on the front end and maybe not bring students back on twenty three and twenty four and do parent conferences or P D or just close. Or on the back end, not bring students back on the second and move the twenty.
We're not bringing kids back.
No, I know. Not bring them back, but bring teachers back on the second of January for their P D day and not have them back on the twenty eighth.
I'll move from the twenty eighth to the second.
I just feel like there's time there
Yeah.
where we can flex.
It's twenty eighth, are you talking, oh, the January.
Instead of doing it on the twenty eighth, just bring everybody, bring the staff back for Friday, the second.
Why not bring the kids back then, though?
Then we're going to lose another day that month.
Yeah.
And we do it on Monday, the twenty third.
Terms of P D.
I don't, I think we should come to school then, too, you're going to put two days at the end of the school year.
Those two days are not going to be used for instruction. Those two days are not going to be used for instruction. They are.
So.
Argue with me all you want.
But Sarah, so the 18th and 19th are though, if you back it up.
If you have a full week, there's a big difference between 19th and.
No, it's not. It's the same.
Then we have to start figuring out ways to ensure that they are, because it's not happening. It's not happening consistently. What 18th and 19th?
December.
Oh.
Well, I like the idea of the 2nd as a professional development day.
And then they come back and they have.
That actually has, um.
Four consecutive weeks of instruction in January.
And, and that has historical precedent. Um, there was, when we used to have more, um, professional develop, full professional development days to play with, um, there was a year where you came back, um, similar to this year, where you're looking at the 2nd and 3rd at the tail end of a week. And because there were two professional development days, they had one in the fall and they set this calendar. I was assistant principal at the time. Um, they set the calendar so that we had two days of professional development, which gave some momentum. People came back. Um, if you started with something on that first day, you had time to see it through on that second day and, um, it worked out pretty well.
So not the 28th or the 4th?
Not the.
But the 2nd. For that day.
And then you continue to create continuity with instructional weeks, other than chopping it up.
Bringing the teachers back on the 2nd.
Right.
The 2nd for professional development. That's right. And I mean, if, but if we're being honest, one, the kids don't come back on, the, the kids tend to not come back on that 2nd.
Right.
Like we saw this week, let, you know, the last week, they didn't come back. A lot didn't come back on that, for us, a lot didn't come back on Thursday and, and less, even less came back on that Friday. Um, and if we, if we're really trying to truly give our teachers time to re-energize, letting them not come back to work on the 2nd as well, makes that happen. I mean, because we're trying to make sure the kids are ready. Um, because again, having kids in a room where the teacher's still mentally still not in the room, it, it doesn't, it doesn't help. It just doesn't work. So, I mean, we want to make sure both are ready to be able to engage and, and, and effective learning.
I say start break on the 23rd. But bring teachers back on the 2nd. That would be my proposal.
And not have the half a day on the 23rd.
No, have it on the 23rd.
No. I'm saying break starts on the 23rd.
No, half day. You're gonna bring them to school Monday?
No, it's 23rd, I'm sorry, 22nd. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong calendar. Start break on the 22nd.
Start break on the 22nd.
Give them those two days, 22 and 23.
Okay. Well, if you're gonna give me the, if you're gonna give them the, I'm saying me, but if you're gonna give them the 22nd and the 23rd,
22nd.
Then, then they've had a, then they've had a full rest.
Yes, they will have two full weeks.
I don't think they need two full weeks. I think that's a waste of two days. They're gonna let them out of school on the 19th.
I want you to tell me what is gonna happen on the 22nd and 20th.
The same thing that's gonna happen on the 19th, if they don't come to school, the 22nd and the 23rd.
We have to figure out some happy medium, because bringing them in the 22nd and the 23rd, again, thinking about operationalizing buildings, we're looking at a budget, transportation. Attendance.
Eighty days.
But we still are gonna have 182.
Bring them on to the 23rd and 24th of June.
But then, no, because then we're gonna.
With the five.
We're gonna get rid of the 28th, because now that'll be part of their break.
Okay, the one. Yeah. So you're adding one.
Yeah. One. It's one.
Emmanuel, what are you thinking here?
Like Sarah's idea. Here, but.
Yeah, longer break.
The kids get two weeks.
Kids get two weeks. The teachers are prepared and ready to come back in January with that PD on the 2nd.
Mm-hmm.
Um, or the 2nd and the 5th. You know, if you do consecutive ones that you were mentioning before and everybody.
We don't have this.
No, yeah, we don't have it.
Be nice.
So you just do the 2nd and then you, then the kids come back on the 5th on a full week.
Yep.
So the kids are out 17 days, 17 days.
Need that 22nd off? Do the kids need that? I get it. It's weird to come for one day and.
How about we come 22nd and we give them the 23rd off?
What, are we gonna come the half day on the 22nd?
No, they won't do anything then. Give them a full day, 22nd and 23rd off.
Full day, 22nd, half day, or 23rd off. I like, Sarah, my first instinct was like, kinda like you, like, no, let the teachers have their break, but you know, I think there's gonna be some, they're not gonna be thrilled, I don't think, when they hear that that's an option or that we're asking them to come back the 2nd. But in a way, it might be nice, you know, easing back into it, coming back in, having a day where you're really focused before the craziness ensues again.
Right.
Might be really beneficial.
Buildings tend to be quiet. I mean, it's, it's, it's less stressful. Um, you know, you're, you're, you're a little bit, we, we've seen some interesting attire today. Um, so, so yes, it, it is easier.
I, but I don't think kids need the 20, I don't think they need the 22nd off. 20, I, I don't know. I mean, it's weird to come back for one day, but.
Well, is it effective to come back for one day? I mean, that's the catch.
That's the question.
Right. I mean, we, I see, I've seen buildings where 25% of the kids don't come in.
Yeah, but the unfortunate thing is you will lose. But doesn't the Friday become the Monday though, Gordon? Um, no matter when it is.
Message. We have to.
There is an element of that.
Not to the same extent.
Not to the same extent. I think as you get right up against Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
It, it's a different energy.
Sure.
Than if you've removed it and you're going back to the 19th. There, it's just a different energy.
Right.
It would be a full day. I, you know, I can't, um, contradict that there was probably less rigor going on.
On that day.
20th. Um, but I, I think it, you know, we do have dedicated staff and they, they do prepare a full day and, and try to sort of meet the energy. Jump in here, Manny, if I'm incorrect, I think the energy would probably be less so on the 19th than it would be what we see on the 23rd, 23rd.
I agree.
Regardless of grade level.
If we came the 22nd, would it be less than it would be the 19th?
If you come the 22nd and, and it's one day for that week.
Yeah.
You're, you're not going to have, you're gonna have attendance.
You're coming on a 22nd.
Situation. I, I don't think you'll get.
Would the 23rd change that? If we put the 20, kept the 23rd? Cause that's the original.
I mean, if you come on the 22nd and 23rd, you know, then you're right back to where we are. I think everybody would hate the 2nd then. In terms of coming back for.
Oh, it's a give and take. What do you think, Anthony?
I like not having the 22nd and 23rd, because I think that any celebrations that they aren't having with their kids, they're gonna do it on Friday, because no one is going to. We're not gonna guarantee, have guaranteed attendance on the 23rd.
What does, what does next year look like?
Then why?
Setting precedence.
Terms of 26, 27?
Yeah. No, 23rd, 24th.
You're talking about the 26th, 27th school year?
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought you meant the.
Yeah.
Day of the month. So next year, Christmas is on, or the year after a Friday. So the.
That's different.
So we would go, so play it out then, Sarah. Would we go 21, 22, back to half day, 23?
Yeah. 20, 20.
But then the half day, that 23 is okay?
I don't love half days.
Oh, that's 26. No, that's right. Yeah.
So you would have one, two, three full days that week and then a half day.
23rd coming. No, the 23rd is a Wednesday next year, or the 20.
Oh, I'm in 20, 27.
End of 26.
20, 20.
I see.
Christmas on Friday.
Christmas on Friday.
Yeah. Can't take the whole week off.
No, no, you, but you can stop. You would do a, you'd probably do a half day on that Wednesday.
Yeah, right.
It'd be like.
Why is it any different this time? Because.
Because of the way.
Two days instead of three days instead of two?
Because of the way New Year's falls.
We can use that.
No, but I'm at that end of it. I just don't know that we need to burn the first end of it.
I just feel like you're swapping it, swapping out one day when you think about it, because then we're not burning the day on the 28th.
Right.
You're getting a full week of instruction that week, as opposed to gaining one day of instruction, two days before a holiday. To me, that 28th will be better served, will, will work in better service of students being in class as opposed to another day off in that month, personally. I'm just trying to.
No, I, I agree with the 2nd. I think that's great. You're thinking in order to make people content with the 2nd, we should give the 23rd.
Not just that, but for effect, what it's gonna be.
Use of a day.
Yes.
Effective use.
All around. I mean.
Also recognizing, um, that everyone needs a break.
Yeah.
At that point.
Yes.
Now, every, everybody needs a rest.
And a lot of people, they travel. It's hard when.
I know. It's just.
When.
Sixty days though.
Yeah, but it's hard when Christmas Eve is like the next day and they're at work the day before. It's nine days of school is the break. Nine days. Four.
Nine days of school.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Teachers would have nine school days off. Kids would have 10 school days off.
Yeah.
Cause you're not including, like, they wouldn't be in school.
Right. It's two full weeks, right? Plus three weekends.
Huh. They get the weekends no matter what. You don't, you want something on the weekends, Greg?
I'm one of five.
Make your motion.
Have to go back to the collaborative.
No, you're the final.
We have typically.
Want to send it back?
In consultation.
What do you mean again?
We mean.
We are meeting, uh.
I think.
Two weeks.
How do you think it's gonna go? No, you don't know.
I don't know.
I, I think it's a good idea. I like it.
Oh.
Feeling good about it.
I feel like it.
Hey. I'm fine. It's democracy.
Oh, but then it's like being able to think through like January, then the only other day we'll have off, where there'll be an interruption is MLK. February, we have February break and we have parent conferences at Meadowbrook. And then March, you get.
Four full weeks.
Four full weeks. Like that is, it's hard when you come off of a November and a December that are choppy. If you can really use January, February and March to like build that momentum again, going into, you know, the end of the school year, assessment season, like.
So it pushes 1 and 80 to June 15th and it pushes five snow days to June 23rd.
That's still early to get out.
And we'll just pray for less snow. We'll pray for less snow day as well. And a wash.
That, that'll be the year.
Probably gonna have at least one snow day. So you'll be walking into the 16th, which is fine, because that's a Tuesday. No one likes to come Monday.
Does this, does the 12th and the 22nd account for these potential PD days in green?
No, only one.
Okay.
I'd have to remove one.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what do you recommend? To go back to collaborative or do you wanna?
I'm willing to talk about it with the collaborative and just say like, this is a, a, a different approach to try to honor time off, but at the same time, use our time efficiently in service of professional learning and in service of, of students instructional minutes.